And now, we will proudly present the Sweet Harmony Riverside Theater Works in our very own High Park.
Thank you. This next song uses the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to convey a very important message. There must be lights burning brighter somewhere. Got to be birds flying higher in a sky more blue. If I can dream of a better land where all my brothers walk hand in hand. Tell me why, oh, why, oh, why won't my dreams come true? Oh.
There must be peace and understanding sometimes.
Strong winds of promise that will blow away the doubt and fear. If I can dream of a warmer sun where hope keeps shining on everyone. Tell me why, oh, why, oh, why won't that sun appear? We're lost in a cloud.
With too much rain.
We're trapped in a world that's troubled with pain. But as long as a man has the strength to dream, he can redeem his soul and fly.
He can fly.
He can fly. He can fly. Even in my heart, there's a trembling question. Still, I am sure that the answer's gonna come somehow. Out there in the dark, there's a beckoning candle. And while I can think, while I can talk, while I can stand, while I can walk. If I can dream. If I can dream. Won't you please tell me why? If I can dream. And when I dream. I'll make my dreams come true.
Make my dreams come true.
Right now.
Right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. As we begin with the National Anthem, we are going to ask Vervali Valdez to join us for the National Anthem.
Detail, present, hold.
Oh, say, can you see? By the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight or the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave for the land of the free and the home of the brave?
If everyone would please be seated as I now call Grand Rabbi Dr. Korf, who is the Chaplain of the City of Boston for over forty years. It is our pleasure and privilege to ask him to come before us for invocation.
I beg your indulgence that triggers something in my mind. Kevin White swore me in as Chaplain for the city forty-one years ago. I was only twelve, so I'm not thinking retiring. Forty years ago this month was my first City Council inauguration. And I can't help but observe my how the council has changed. God has blessed us with progress and change to reflect the beauty of our beloved city. And so we pray, dear Lord, as we embark on an exciting new year of hope and optimism, progress and blessing, bless our leaders and bless the followers, the people of the City of Boston, with trust and confidence in those we have elected. For we have chosen our city officials to lead us, not to be us. Followers without leaders is chaos, while leaders without followers is anarchy. Help us to live for ourselves by living for others. Teach us to use both our minds and our hearts. Strengthen us to think like men and women of action and to act like men and women of thought. Help us to be modest in our demands and generous in our giving. Keep us gentle in our speech and strong in our actions. In the coming year, bring us closer, dear Lord, to one another with love and understanding, with shared concerns and mutual respect. Help us to draw upon our capacity to care and keep us close to one another, no matter how far apart we may be. Give us the gift of being able to be more interested in other people than in ourselves and sustain us. We invoke thy blessings, oh, Lord, on this city family that is gathered here and around the city. And we thank you for what we mean and for what we bring to one another and to the people of Boston. Bless our leaders, bless our followers. God bless the City of Boston now and always. May this be God's will, that she bless us and keep us. Shine her countenance upon us and grant us peace. And let us say amen.
Thank you for inspiring us, Rabbi. As we begin this wonderful, exciting ceremony, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome you once again to Historic Faneuil Hall. As the American novelist John Gardner has said, "History never seems like history when you're living through it." But today, we come together to celebrate and participate in Boston's rich history. Whether these newly-elected councilors have partaken in this ceremony several times or are experiencing it for the first time, this is a very special day, made more special by your presence. You, dear councilors, have shown courage in placing your names on the ballot and today epitomizes the voter's decision to reward your compassion, integrity, and dedication with their votes and your successful election. There is much to anticipate in this hall because you represent the hopes of Boston's bright future. As President John F. Kennedy once said, "Let public service be a proud and lively career." As we begin our journey through the next chapters of our history, we, all here present today, pledge our support and prayers. And with this, I would now like to read the election results. For your records listed below are the candidates elected to the Boston City Council at the municipal election in Boston on November 3rd, 2015. City Council at large, elected for two-year term, Ayanna S. Pressley, 1910 Dorchester Avenue, District 3. Michelle Wu, 15 Augustus Avenue, District 5. Michael F. Flaherty, 1726 Columbia Road, District 2. Ananisa Asabi George, 32 Mayhew Street, District 3. City Council by district, elected for a two-year term, Salvatore Lamatina, 76 Monmouth Avenue, District 1. I know, I've been there. Bill Linehan, 128 G Street, District 2. Frank Baker, 43 Grampian Way, District 3. Andrea J. Joy Campbell, 40 River Street, District 4. Timothy P. McCarthy, 51 Chesterfield Street, District 5. Matt O'Malley, 226 Jamaica Way, District 6. Tito Jackson, 37 Schuler Street, District 7. Josh Saikum, 177 Commonwealth Avenue, District 8. And Mark C. Siomo, 10 Olivia Road, District 9. At this time, I have the privilege of asking our amazing Mayor, Martin J. Walsh, to administer the oath of office to the Boston City Council.
Hello? Okay. After I state your name, raise your right hand, sorry. I do solemnly swear that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and will support the Constitution thereof, so help me God. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a member of the City Council of the City of Boston according to the best of my abilities and understanding, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and laws of this Commonwealth. So help me God. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God. Congratulations, Council. I just want to reiterate what the clerk said. Good morning and welcome to Historic Faneuil Hall today on this great historic day. I was sitting here watching some of the faces and I want to thank the command staff of the Fire Department, Police Department, EMS, all the cabinet positions. I want to thank the elected officials that are here from the State House, from the Senate and the House, and the sheriff and the district attorney, and past and present, thank you very much. I want to congratulate all the parents and family out there today because you can see it in your face, you're beaming. This day is for you. Look around, take it all in, enjoy it. This day is for you, for the supporters of all these great people up here. Thank you as well for being involved in the process. Thank you for holding signs and knocking doors and everything you did because certainly they're very excited today to be standing up here for your great work. So thank you for being here as well today. The Boston City Council is 106 years old. This body is 106 years old. And a lot of people have gone through this body. And it's certainly a position in the City of Boston that's held in high esteem. I want to thank, start by thanking the returning councilors from last session for the great work that we did together. In particular, I want to thank Billy Linehan for your presidency and your leadership of this body. The last two years, this council, last year's council and administration, we accomplished a lot. When you think back and you look upon what we did, we made our city stronger and safer to the point where we had a sixteen-year low in homicides last year in the city. And a lot of the work that... We worked on paid rent relief for city workers and that work isn't done yet. We still have more work to do there, which we will. We've reinstated the cadet program in our Boston Police Department to continue to bring diversity to our police department. We've built a fiscally-strong budget which invests in our schools, our neighborhoods, and jobs so you can be proud of the work we did. You've proven that when we work together, I'm the better mayor and you are a stronger council. And that's something that's very important for us to remember. As the Boston City Council, the council is very strong. It has an impressive combination of experience, innovation, and passion. You fight for values that made our community stronger. But I also want to thank you for the new ideas that we have. And I look forward to what we're going to be doing in this term. I look forward to the work that we have in front of us. There's a lot of great work that's going to be happening. A big part of the council is your diversity. It's something that's very important to our city. Thank you. Thank you, Tony. This council that you see on the stage is a council with new faces, but also a lot of experience. That's what's important here. We have a council that can work together, that understands some of these folks that have gone through the challenges of being on the council in the past and some are new, bringing new ideas. And it's important for us that we have an open line of communication. It's also important that we see women and people of color step up into the leadership roles here in the city. Now, I know it's really exciting for eleven of you that have been on this stage in the past, but there are two members of the City Council that I know that their stomachs are probably turning and I know their parents are. Andrea Campbell and Nisa Asabi George. Congratulations. And also, today as a council, you may make even more history with your new president, but it's too soon for me to comment on that. So I'm just gonna have to wait till you take the vote and see what happens there. You know, this council will be forever identified with a newer era in Boston's history. But we have not written that final chapter yet. And it's important for us to understand that we have a lot of work to do in front of us. There's a lot of things that we started last year and there's a lot of things that we're going to continue to do this year as a city to continue to build on the great city and great traditions we have. We have tough challenges that we're gonna have to face. And we're also, we're not always gonna agree on the course of action. But it's important for us to make sure that we keep an open line of communication and close collaborations as we move forward. That's something that we did last year. We know that the future of Boston depends upon it. We know that the people of Boston deserve it. And we know that Boston can depend on you, all of you, the City Council, in the mayor's office to make sure we move our agendas forward. So again, I want to thank everyone for being here today. I want to congratulate the new council on your new terms. I look forward to working with you as we go into this new session. And again, I want to thank all of the people out here today that came to Historic Faneuil Hall to be part of this very important ceremony. This is an exciting day in the City of Boston. We are a city on the rise. We are a city on the rise and we're a city that's not gonna look back. And with all of us together, the council and the mayor's office working together, no one can stop Boston. So thank you very much and have a great New Year.
Inspiring. I think we all want to get to work now, Mayor. As we bring this wonderful experience to closure, I would like to invite no stranger, as is Rabbi Korf, our good friend Reverend Joe White, for benediction. And then after that, we will have the Sweet Harmony Riverside Theater Works, who are located in High Park and are just fabulous, who will sing "God Bless America" after that. Thank you and I hope you've enjoyed this morning.
As we gather together, proclaimed when Ron Cobb brought the staff to the floor, which has the emblem of our city on it, Ron Cobb is the city messenger, on that city logo, it has the word "Sic ut patribus sit deus nobis." Today, we would say ancestors. It's from the scriptures. As God, you were with our fathers. Today, we would say ancestors. So too, to be with us. As you were with our ancestors. To bring together prayers. Today, let us say thirteen amens for each of our councilors. And we bring our prayers together. Let's stand together and pray for our city, our city council, and all of us gathered here. That which you enjoin on us today, oh, Lord, is not too mysterious or remote for us. It's not up in the sky that you should say, "Who will go up in the sky and get it for us and tell us of it that we may carry it out?" Nor is it across the sea that you should say, "Who will cross the sea and get it for us and tell us of it that we may carry it out?" It is already in our mouths and in our hearts. We have only to carry it out in love. Let's pray for that love in all faiths and cultures in our city, for all backgrounds, for all which each counselor represents in districts, for all that our mayor brings forth, for all that we bring forth today, for you, family, and friends of City Councilors inaugurated today, for all these blessings around us, for the safety, public safety personnel of our city, fire, and police, and for all citizens. Let's bow our heads and pray. As you were with our fathers, so be with us today. Amen.
And now, we will have our wonderful musicians and singers from Hyde Park.